The Select Board for February 28, 2022, roll call vote. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the Chair is here. Okay, we are going to recess.
Mr. Chair? Excuse me, somebody, somebody getting on the line here that...
Who are these people?
Yeah.
Well, they can go online, but that's okay.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
That's, that's for the regular session. All right, we're going to recess the regular session and go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21. Roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
The Chair votes in favor. Okay, gentlemen, we can leave this link and go to the executive session links that were emailed to you, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to reconvene the meeting of February 28th, 2022. Roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair is here. All right, can please rise for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. Liberty. Justice for all. Please remain standing as we offer our moment of silence for our healthcare workers. And for our service people, both here and abroad, both past, past and present. And also pray for peace. Please be seated. Okay, all right, first item on the agenda, we have a hearing on the agricultural application for the Paydare Oyster Farm. This was already approved, but we need to hold a hearing. So I'm going to open up the hearing right now. Since we've already gone through the paperwork and whatnot, I'm going to open up the hearing to anybody who is in favor of this, if they'd like to speak. Okay, is there anybody in the audience who is opposed to this, would they like to speak? Okay, being none, boy pleasure again, just to reemphasize our vote of the previous meeting.
Motion to approve the application of Paydare Oyster Farm.
Okay, the.
I'll second that motion.
As presented.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron to approve the transfer of license of the Paydare Oyster Farm. Roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, so that's approved. All right, 6:32, on time, we have a change of manager at the American Country Club, and I believe Mr. Bragger is here for that.
I just, if you don't mind, yeah. I'm thinking about whether I should recuse myself, but it's only a change of manager, even though I am a member of the country club.
I don't think that's the problem. You're not, you're not part of the board of directors or anything like that.
I am not, otherwise, otherwise I wouldn't.
Yep.
All right, just wanted to mention it, so it's up there. All right.
All right, so we have a change of manager, and I believe Mr. Bragger is now going to be the manager of the. If I'm correct, Mr. Bragger?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, and let's see. All right. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Bragger? Okay, board's pleasure.
Motion to.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by. Now, Mr. Herron, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yep.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, that concludes our appointments for the evening.
Thanks, Mr. Bragger.
Thank you, Mr. Bragger, good luck. All right, let's see, under new business, we have the Energy Assistance Grant Award, Mr. Hadad.
Yes, good evening, thank you for having me. So we received notification recently that we were awarded an energy assistance grant from the Attorney General's Office. If you recall, we recently received a similar award in the past, except that was for natural gas only, this award was expanded upon. So we received $20,000 to be used over the next couple of fiscal years to help our residents in need. Just to give you a brief summary, the natural gas program, we were able to serve 56 households in Dartmouth, 108 residents. Forty-two of those household were elders, had an elder in the house, 13 of them had a minor, six of them were veterans. Seven of them had an individual with disability. So you can see, we really provided assistance to a wide, wide range of Dartmouth residents, and we look forward to continuing that program.
Excellent. Yeah, well, that's good to know. Mr. Herron?
You mentioned this program was like three years, can we use the 20,000 in one year?
We can, although I recommend that we span it out over the next couple of fiscal years, we do have a small balance in the natural gas grant, so we'll utilize that for natural gas participants. This will go probably even quicker, because this is all heating assistance, and especially with the recent increase in home heating costs, it's certainly needed now more than ever. So we'll try to span it out over the next two fiscal years, probably $10,000 each year.
Okay. All right, good. Any other questions? All right, terrific, thank you.
Thanks, Cody.
Cody, great job.
Thank you.
All right, next item is we have the RFQ for marijuana establishment.
Uh, yes, so Mr. Hadad's been working on our current host community agreements, but we also are reissuing a RFQ again, and I'll let Cody kind of give a little more detail about the dates and when they're advertised and due.
Okay.
Yes, so we issued another round of the RFQ, that'll be due at the last week of March. So we'll receive applications at that point, and then we'll put our internal review team together, like we've done in the past. We'll review that for the criteria set out in the RFQ, and then we will work with applicants to make a recommendation to the board. So it's a pretty straightforward process, I think I've said in the past, but I've had communication with the Cannabis Control Commission, and they have stated that they really like our process, they find it to be fair and equitable, which is important in this industry, so we're going to continue on with that process, and we look forward to receiving additional applications.
Good. We don't have to sign the host agreement yet, do we?
We've signed one for solar therapeutics up on Fons Corner Road, and we're in the process of working with the host meeting agreement for the, for cultivation and manufacturing on Route 6.
Okay. Mr. Herron?
Did Anthony Stavastana review this contract?
So as I mentioned to you, Mr. Herron, so Attorney Cruz, who works with Attorney Stavastana, has helped to draft the contract originally, so he has reviewed it, Anthony has reviewed it. We've also go back and forth with the selected vendors council, and it is always reviewed by council before we present it to the board.
Also, I was looking at, you know, opening date, you're requiring $100,000.
We really can't discuss that contract, so I'm not sure if you want to get into the details of that in an open session.
Is that contract specific?
Which has not been agreed upon, so we.
But this is. But this is a contract you're going to gift to everyone?
No. We, it depends on what the use is, if it's manufacturing, if it's retail, we have different criteria for the different types of marijuana use.
Okay. How about the word gifts in the contract?
We can't talk about the contract at all in open session, until it's, until it's ready for people.
Good.
If you want, if you have questions about what you've seen drafts to date, you can certainly email them to me or Cody, and we can answer those questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Herron. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Excuse me. Yeah, I'm listening, I was listening to the CBA meeting the other night regarding a new proposal. And it seems that there is a gray area as to how many growing facilities we could have. But, but more specific in terms of retail and medical. So this, the purpose of this is to just keep getting it out there to try to fill in all these gaps, is that what we're doing there, Cody, or?
Yeah, so we still have availability in our retail licenses and potentially in our cultivation manufacturing as well, especially in the overlay district. The, the group that's being proposed, the old tennis club is not within the overlay district. So we can certainly entertain another option in the overlay district.
So this, the purpose is this, if you don't get this out, then you can't just take anybody on, it has to be done on this timetable, is that why we're doing it now?
Yeah, we put out the RFQ, it's a, it's a fair opportunity for any potential marijuana company to, to get their shot, and it really opens up the door for all of them to apply. And we lay out the guidelines, this is how you're going to be evaluated. And it's just, it's fair and equitable, and so that we provide this timeline, applications are all due at the same time, there were there, no one company gets an advantage over the other.
How do you distribute this?
This is distributed on our website, the state's bidding system, Conbuys, and anyone that's reached out to me in the past regarding interest, I sent an email blast out to them.
Thank you.
If a vendor has, doesn't agree with the terms of the contract, do they come before the select board for, for final review, or do you make a decision in the background says, no, we're not going to accept that?
Uh, no, we would bring it before the board. Generally, we have the same criteria and expectation with all of the vendors that come in. It's fair and consistent, and consistent with other communities. So we generally will have a negotiation back and forth over the contract as a whole, and then we present it to the board. We have not had pushback from any vendors about not feeling like they're being treated fairly.
But, but if they had an issue, they could request a meeting with the select board to move a contract forward?
Uh, yes, sure.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, we have, we want to discuss the resumption of the in-person meeting. Just as, as an FYI, February 12th, Governor Baker signed a supplemental appropriations bill, and in that supplemental appropriations bill had, they have allowed. They extended the previous authorizations on remote meetings for public, public meetings and town meetings through July 15th. This, what this does is this allows, the, the original law was signed back in April of 2020. This also allows town meetings to reduce their quorums if they feel that is necessary. So we need to have a discussion. Earlier this year, we had said we were going to do remote through February through the end of the month, well, gentlemen, today's the end of the month. I think it's time to start meeting, meeting in person, but I would like to allow any public, any, any board, whether they be appointed or elected, the option to meet in remote if they feel it's necessary. So I, myself, I would be akin to vote to go back to regular meetings in person, but to allow the option for any board elected or appointed to meet remotely if they so desire. Thoughts?
Well, that sounds, sounds great, Sean, but we, we need to have some dates to think about. And it's, it's a good opportunity to, to be open-minded about other boards that might have some serious concerns for whatever reason.
I would, myself, I would say if we were to do this, we would make it effective tomorrow. The only reason, I mean, whatever, whatever meeting has already been scheduled has already been scheduled for this week, and maybe even sometimes next week. But if we can tell everybody that effective tomorrow, that you can resume in-person meetings with appropriate distancing, I guess, if you want to say what, you know, the way we, the way we did it back in, when we first started out back in February and March. You know, something similar to that, we can have Mr. Michaud from the Board of Health pipe in on, you know, the, the in-person meeting guidelines. If the board desires, but I think we should give, I think we should start looking at it, getting to see each other again. And, and having in-person meetings, and if, I mean, if a meeting gets large enough, you know, maybe you can do remote, but I think once we start meeting in person that we, unless something drastic happens, that we maintain it, but I like to give the option to other boards to either go remote or in person if they wish. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Uh, I'm certainly in favor of restarting, and I think it's a good idea to do it for the month of March. The only downside to giving flexibility, and not sure why, but we should do it, but the downside is that there's an inconsistency where the general public may not know whether it's soon or it's not, and if we're consistent and that all meetings are live, that is making more consistent, because the idea is to get more people available to go to meetings, and if they know that they're all live, then there is a consistency there, but weigh that against how important it is to give committees the option.
Well, I mean, we, we as a select board can only dictate the boards that are have under our jurisdictions, we can't tell the planning board, we can't tell the library board of trustees, we can't tell the school committee, the board of health, the housing authority. I think that's it, you know, that they cannot, how they meet on the board of health, you know, how they can and cannot meet, because they're elected officials, and they're, they do not fall under the guise of the select board. But conservation, you know, we can't even tell the finance committee, finance committee is under the town moderator. So we can only do conservation, you know, any boards appointed by us. But I would think that at least a directive, a directive saying that the select board is open, has discussed this, and they're open to having in-person meetings at each board's discretion, and leave it at that.
Well, on the other hand, a couple of months back, we, we pretty much told the town hall in total that the, the open meetings were, were a thing of the past until through the month of February, so we did have some kind of an authority there.
Right, and there was a couple, and there was a couple people, there was a couple boards that still met in person.
Okay.
One in particular, and that's under our, under our jurisdiction.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you with your strategy going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I have no problem with in-person meetings as long as there are no masks involved.
I think at this point in time, masks are optional.
I think we should get that clarified from Mr. Michaud, just to make sure.
We have, we, we follow the governor's guidelines, and ma- masks are recommended, but not required.
Right. So basically, we can have open meetings, and they can be mask optional.
We should.
Distance is going to be an issue, that distancing.
One at a time, please, David.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Talbot?
I'm sorry, okay, but I take it then distancing and rules set up by Mr. Michaud would be important without masks?
Correct, I mean, we can, I mean, we can meet the way we did before, you know, the setup in the table in the U, you know, that's fine. And I think other boards can follow the same.
We did not meet up, we didn't meet up on the top then.
No, we did not meet on the dais, we met on the, on the, on the floor in the U shape. Mr. Mickelson?
It's, it's difficult on, on, on the dais. It's, it's, it's difficult on, on, on the dais, there's not enough room to separate. So that's one thing. I think we should just put signs up also, and when you're going to that room, they have an option for, just for a mask or in front doors and the back door, masks are optional.
Yep, well, what we can do is, if we decide to open up the meetings to pub, to in-person, that a memo will be sent out to all boards and all chairman, all, all departments, all chairs, and all board members that, you know, we are requesting, we have, we are now opening up the meetings to in-person or Zoom at their, you know, at your your options, and that, and that masks are optional, but please post, please post in your, you know, in your postings or in your, or prior to your meeting, some sign saying that, you know, masks are optional. You can also post that at the doors to town hall and any other meeting place. So which would be the DPW offices, the library board of trustees, trustee room, and the Quinn School.
Council on Aging.
Yeah, Council on Aging, and also the Housing Authority.
Yeah, yeah, no. Town meeting will not be affected by this decision right now.
That's, town meeting is, is at another discussion.
Right.
That's, that's a discussion with the moderator, and the moderator is the one that drives that bus.
Mm-hmm, right.
Mr. Talbot?
Make a motion?
Go right ahead.
That we, we notify all town boards and committees that open meetings are now effective, in-person meetings, this is March 1st, however, you do have the option of having Zoom meetings. And that the Director of the Board of Health, Mr. Michaud, will establish rules and regulations inside town buildings in regard to optional masks and social distancing.
Second.
Okay, all right, I, okay, yeah, I'll agree with that. On the motion, any questions? All right, roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, well, this is also one way to stop the complaints about Frank smoking, so.
He'll find a way. Yeah, he'll sneak. We're going to build a tent for you, Frank, and it'll, it'll have a little fan at the top. And it'll exhaust out one of the windows.
To be honest, to be honest with you, I'm going to miss it.
Boy, all right. Where's Frank?
Next item on the agenda is, unfortunately, it's a sad one, we just want to recognize the passing of Natalie Eldias. Natalie has, was a former member of the select board, but more importantly, she was a longtime serving employee of the town in the treasurer's office, and she just was she was a vibrant and funny person. And now she joins her, her husband, Arthur Dias, the former harbor master up there. I have a feeling Arthur, Arthur had a free run up there, and now Natalie's coming along, and Arthur, sorry. But she's, she was a great person, love speaking to her many, many times, and I know our, our condolences go out to the entire Dias family. It's a sad thing to see. Too many good ones in the last six months have, have passed on, that's for sure. So.
Amen.
Rest in peace, Natalie.
Yep. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Herron?
Natalie Dias and her husband gave back a lot to this town and community, and that spirit lives forward in her children and grandchildren who give back to the town and to our country.
Yes, very much so, and this, I mean, I tell you, one of the things that is true to the fact is that some of some of the well-known people in the last six months that have passed away in this town, each one of their families have a history of, of doing a lot for this town, within this town, and, you know, for the community. And that is true to Dartmouth pride, Dartmouth spirit, and it's something we all should, you know, aspire to, so. All right. See. Yes, mister.
Should we, uh, uh, give the town administration the authority to sign the warrant?
Yeah, that, that was on my list next. I need a motion to allow Mr. McGinnis to sign the warrant and use our stamp in, in our signature stead.
So, so moved.
All right, moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron, on the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Talbot?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
And Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, we've got two common vics to square away, Pizonis and the Village Cafe. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Talbot?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, old business, Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, yes, under COVID, no new businesses, no new business, other than the cases seem to be on the decline. Masks orders are changing as, and people are starting to meet in person, so we continue to monitor that, monitor that, though, and, and follow the, the state and the CDC's guidelines.
And just as, just as an FYI, the schools have gone max mask optional as of today.
Mm-hmm.
Our schools.
Bliss Corner, no new updates, and Lake Nokichoke, no new updates.
Okay, under Bliss Corner, Mr. McGinnis, I understand, if I remember correctly, the EPA wanted to do staging in our area, how is that going, are we allowing them to stage behind the old police station?
We are working on an access agreement, our Bliss Corner council is working with EPA council to draft an agreement that allows access for the EPA onto town property. There's some stipulations that, that we just wanted to make sure that the town is protected, that the work involved there does not disturb or cause any future contamination on the site, so that access agreement is in the works.
Right, okay, I like this, I would like to see that be worked out, I mean, let's not make it onerous, but let's, you know, let's make it so that, you know, we don't look to be uncooperative. So I just like to see that, and I'm sure, I'm sure council is, is well aware of that too, so. Okay. Minutes of February 7th and February 14th, board pleasure.
Motion to approve as presented, February 7th, 2022, February 14th, 2022.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson to accept the minutes of February 7th and February 14th. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Herron, on the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Talbot?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
And Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, members, you have anything to bring up before the board? Okay, one thing I do want to bring up, Mr. McGinnis, I would, I would appreciate a letter being sent to Massachusetts DOT just to kind of inform them that there are numerous bottomless pits on Route 6 in the, and actually in the driving lanes. Some of them are, some of them are at least six inches deep, so we want to make them aware that, I mean, you know, it's winter, it's going to happen, unfortunately. And I believe also the same reminder, if we can send a reminder out to our DPW regarding, you know, as if the trash pickup guys and the recycle guys drive around, if they see a pothole, please report it to their supervisor, so that we can get it get repaired, because we want to avoid insurance claims as much as possible. Mr. Talbot?
Just to clarify, our next meeting is on March 14th.
Yes.
And, and that will be a meeting held.
It'll be an in-person meeting.
Right.
So where are your best duds?
Oh, I got it all set, my wife's got it all ready for me.
Your mother will be very glad to see that.
All right, anything further? All right, gentlemen, let's have a motion so that we can get out of here in record time.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion made by Mr. Mickelson to adjourn, seconded by
Second.
Mr. Herron? On the motion, any questions, being none, roll call vote, Mr. Talbot?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes, sir.
And the chair votes in favor, we are adjourned at 6:59.